Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I'd like to call to order the Everett City Council Meeting of August 3, 2022, and welcome city staff and our guests back into the city council chambers. The city council is conducting our weekly council meeting hybrid. This will allow us to reach members of our community who wish to participate via Zoom or those who wish to attend in person in the chambers. It is our hope to continue this format to be as accessible as possible to our community. For those who wish to participate via Zoom at a future meeting, you will find the public comment registration form on the city of Everett website under the city council department. Select the link that says, "Register here to provide comment via Zoom", and fill out the form completely. After the public comment form is submitted, you'll receive an email confirmation with the Zoom link and phone number to the meeting. Participants must submit the form at least 30 minutes prior to the council meeting. Forms submitted after that time will not receive the Zoom link and number to speak, but may still participate the night of the meeting, or day if it's the day meeting, by coming in person to the council chambers. Please note that we do not allow comments on any kind of campaigning, whether for or against ballot measures or candidates running for office, and we do not accept comments focused on purely personal matters that are unrelated to city business. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Councilmember Vogely?
Here.
Councilmembers Zarlingo?
Here.
Councilmember Tui?
Here.
Councilmember Fosse?
Here.
Councilmember Schwab?
Here.
President Stonecifer?
Here. Councilmember Ryan, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Tui, will you please read the land acknowledgement?
Yes. The city council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Stahokshi people and their successors, the Talalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of July 20, 2022?
Vogely so moves.
Councilmember Ryan seconds.
We have a motion and a second to approve the July 20 minutes. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Abstain.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of July 27, 2022?
Councilmember Tui, so moves the motion?
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
I think yes, because I can't remember if I was here.
Yes, you were.
Oh, yeah. Then yes. If I wasn't, then I abstained.
Councilmembers Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Abstain. Good evening, Mayor Franklin.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. First, I want to just thank all the staff and neighborhood leaders that put together a fabulous national night out, events all over the city. I know I saw a number of my colleagues here out and about, visiting with our neighborhood groups, and it was just really fun. And a number of our staff members were part of the event, so I thank the team that worked on that. And then I would like to invite Deputy Chief Ford to introduce two of our newest officers for swearing in.
Thank you, Mayor. Jared Irving with the Police Department. It's, uh, thank you, councilmembers, and Council President Stonecifer. Very excited to stand before you today to introduce our two newest officers for the Everett Police Department. But before I introduce them, I want to say how excited they are to finally be back after four months down at the Criminal Justice Training Commission, logging 720 hours of rigorous training, sometimes mentally and physically draining. But they're back, and we see their smiling faces before us tonight, and I'm excited to be able to do this for them. Gentlemen? I'll introduce first Officer Alex Vanderweelen. Alex was born in Everett and raised in Muckelteel, where he graduated from Cameach High School in 2013. Prior to joining EPD, Alex worked as a corrections officer at the Mineral Correctional Complex for three years. His position at the prison allowed him all custody levels, transported prisoners, and frequently visited Snohomish County Jail. Alex decided to pursue a career as a police officer so he could continue his passion for problem-solving and helping people. Everett was an easy choice for Alex, who wanted to serve in a city that helped, excuse me, was an easy choice for Alex, who wanted to help special meaning to him for helping him give back to the community where he was raised. Alex graduated from the Basic Law Enforcement Academy on July 28. Now back at Everett, he looks forward to completing his field training and being out on patrol, where he can respond to calls and start helping the community with the issues they face. If Alex is not working, you may find him out enjoying a round of golf on a local course. Thank you, Alex. Officer Vikas Nayyar. Vik was born and raised in India. He completed his Bachelor of Arts degree there prior to moving to the United States in 2012. After moving to the U.S., Vik managed multiple subway-chain restaurants for a period of six years. Vik then served as a corrections deputy for Skagit County Sheriff's Office for two years prior to being hired by EPD. Vik dreamed of becoming a police officer as a child and has always wanted to serve his community. It wasn't until he moved to the U.S. that he felt the opportunity to pursue that dream. He hopes his new career will motivate his children to also pursue a service-minded profession. Vik gravitated toward EPD from day one due to the diversity and friendliness of those he met. He also feels EPD is a department that will help guide him and provide the necessary training to grow in his career. Vik graduated from the Basic Law Enforcement Academy on July 28 and looks forward to learning the ropes and becoming an essential member of the Everett Police Department team. His future interests include investigations and SWAT. While not at work, Vik enjoys spending time with his wife and three children. You might also catch him watching cricket, or Formula One racing, or talking cars with his friends. Thank you, Vik. And now I present to you Officers Alex Vanderweelen and Officer Vikas Nayyar for swearing in. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to accept Vikas Nayyar and Alex Vanderweelen as the newest members of the Everett Police Department?
Yes, so moved by Councilmember Tui.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmembers Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. And the clerk will now administer the oath.
All right, you guys stand here and face me. So, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name. Do solemnly swear that I am either a citizen of the United States or a lawful permanent resident that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington, and the Charter and ordinances of the city of Everett, and that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially perform the duties of police officer of the city of Everett according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations. Thank you.
Welcome to our two new officers, and congratulations. And then just want to, well, we having a Providence leadership come forward in just a moment as well, so I want to thank folks from Providence. I know we have a number of nurses in the audience as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we will get an update from Providence Swedish Medical Center, and I am very happy this evening to welcome Darren Reddick, the chief executive, Janine Holbrook, the nursing, uh, chief nursing officer, and Dr. Jay Cook, the chief medical officer. And appreciate you coming to our meeting on such short notice. As you know, we've had a few of your staff address us over the past several weeks, and it has raised a lot of questions, I think, for us on council and also probably in the broader community. And so we're happy to have you here to help us get more context on what's going on in your world over there. So, thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for having us, and we're pleased to be here to provide some information. I know you all have a packet, and there's a lot of slides. We're going to move through them pretty quickly. But if you have questions, we'll certainly try to answer them. And we're going to tag-team this a little bit, so it looks a little awkward as a threesome up here. But, um, so I'm going to quickly, just quick background. Mostly of you know this, that we've been here, Providence has been here over 100 years, serving our community. Mission is really driven on being steadfast to serve all of our community with a special focus on the poor and vulnerable. And we're very proud that we were in a position to be prepared for receiving the first COVID patient in the United States in January of 2020, and to be able to be able to serve our community through the pandemic over the last couple of years moving forward. We've also, in 2021, despite the pandemic, was able to deliver over $89 million of charity care to our community, and also expand our services by opening a new inpatient behavioral health unit and additional beds to help serve the community, which were very much needed. But we're here really to talk through a little bit of what's happening in healthcare, and specifically how that's affecting Providence and in our community. And in reality, healthcare in the United States and in Washington is frankly in a crisis right now, and it's driven by three main factors that we'll talk about today, especially in Washington State and applying to Providence and Everett. One is the workforce, and I think you all are acutely aware of the workforce challenges we're all experiencing in our, in our country, in our city. The other topic we'll cover in a little more detail is the large number of medically-ready-to-discharge patients from the hospital that no longer need acute care services, that still reside in our hospital and beds that we're caring for. And then finally, again, probably nothing that's a real surprise for all of you is just the skyrocketing costs that we're seeing around our expenses without having any real significant counter to that with reimbursement. So we'll hit through a couple of slides. This is just, just to kind of point out, a lot, this is in the news throughout, has been in the news for a number of years. You can see headlines that are throughout different publications. And so really, this is an issue that's really affecting healthcare and broadly throughout the United States. There is a study completed recently by McKinsey Company that was, had some pretty discouraging information. And it was, they did a survey, and there was one in three nurses in the United States that were considering exiting nursing in the next year. And if you think about our nursing shortage in the, in Washington State, we are, we are well beyond 6,000 nurses short in our current workforce. And so that's a pretty bleak picture of what we're looking at. Recently, WISH, the Washington State Healthcare Association, did a survey, and I think this is in 2021, to really kind of look at, in our state, what areas of nursing that they're seeing the highest turnover in. And as you can see from, from this graph, our med-surg nursing units throughout the state are seeing a pretty high turnover, followed second by our, by emergency departments. This, this is just to show that this problem of workforce doesn't just apply to nursing and hospitals. We are seeing a lot of need in other areas. CNAs are really kind of top the list. But when you look through the workforce needed in our hospitals, we're struggling in almost every area in terms of finding staff, and this is not unique to us. This is, this is state data that shows a similar picture. So as we think about, you know, the, the struggle with our workforce, and we move to some of the other challenges that we're having, we really want to kind of call out the, the issue that we're having, especially at Providence and Everett, with the high number of patients who are medically stable, but we're not able to discharge. And that number has, has at one point been up to 130 to 150 patients at once. It's currently at around 100, 100 patients. And when you think about having those patients in our hospital, there's two things that kind of apply to this. One, there, there are inpatient beds that could be used for other community members that are waiting for care, and we need a workforce of roughly 100 nurses to care for these patients that are in the, in the hospital. So that's kind of compounding a workforce issue and access issue. The other challenge that that creates for us is that as we see that pressure on the hospital, it's often, well, it's often, it's routine now that we have a number of patients that are, have been cared for in our, by our emergency department that really need inpatient care. But we're not able to move them up to a patient unit because we don't have staff or capacity to care for those patients. This morning, I think it was somewhere around 42 patients this morning that were in the, the emergency department, waiting to be, to be moved up to an inpatient unit, but we didn't have capacity. So as you think about the impact of having 100 patients here that could potentially be served in another location more appropriately, you, you can kind of do the math and see how much this is really impacting and, and impacting care. It's also not a great place for a patient to be long-term, for an extended period of time, when they could be in a more appropriate setting, like an adult family home or a skilled nursing facility that, that really has access to outside resources as well. The other, the other comment, and I think you've probably heard a little bit about this as we've come through the initial wave of the pandemic, is the amount of pent-up care that exists in the community. As we, as we moved into the pandemic, hospitals really reduced down. Many of the community members really didn't want to go to the hospital for care or go to healthcare facilities for care to, to be safe and, and, and not contract COVID. But that's delayed a lot of care in our community. And what we're seeing as we've worked into 2022 is a higher number of needs of higher-acute patients coming to our hospital, and we're seeing our QD level, meaning the, the, I shouldn't be talking about this, should be the good doctor here. But, but, yeah, but the QD level or the, the sickness of our patients that we're seeing are just more severe than what we had seen in the past. I think the other point I'd like to make with the situation is because of the capacity issues that we're seeing and have been experiencing as a leadership, a clinical leadership team, we've had to meet pretty regularly, six days a week, and this goes back to September of 2021, to review surgical and procedural cases to determine which cases we would be able to safely complete the next day and have a bed or resources to recover the patient. And so this has been an ongoing set of meetings, pretty routinely. Now we're coming up on almost a full year of holding these meetings, including on Sundays. And we're finding, often we're, we're having to delay cases or cancel cases because we don't have resources. Lately, the resource has been bed availability and staff availability on the inpatient floor is to care for these patients, and that continues. A number of these patients are seeing this happen to them multiple times. So it's not just once, and then we were able to schedule. Sometimes there's been patients that have four and five delays before we're able to see the patient. And that, of course, creates other challenges for, for care in our community.
I can, I can add a little flavor to that. So I, as well as Darren and Janine have been... Oh, sure. Sorry, thank you. Yeah, right. So Darren and Janine and I have been on almost every single one of these meetings for the last 11 months. And, and, you know, the cases that we're considering are, are not trivial. These are, these are patients who have needs for procedures that are going to require an overnight stay, at least sometimes multiple days. And it's, it's gut-wrenching to have to, you know, every day, go through the list and determine, you know, if we have enough resources to serve the community. And as Darren said, this is all about staffing and, and space. And, you know, I, I know that this, the impact that this has on, on patients and our community and the staff in our medical center that, that are really making these tough decisions over a long period of time that, that have such a big impact. And so, again, this was not necessary before we had such severe staffing and capacity constraints.
Thanks, Jay. So as we think about, you know, the situation we're in, and we're, we're, again, we're not that different from other hospitals, these are some, some activities that most hospitals are engaging in, and we're no exception in trying to kind of manage our way through this crisis. And so many hospitals are closing services or reducing services. We're no, we're no different. Unfortunately, you probably heard, probably five weeks ago, we had to pause on admissions for a pediatric unit because we were unable to maintain just the minimum core staffing, R&amp;staffing for that unit. As we recruit and try to recruit more nurses, we'll, we'll reopen it. But at the time being, that unit remains closed to admissions until we can reach that point. As we are seeing staffing constraints, we daily are, are adjusting the available beds on our units. If we don't have enough staff to safely care for patients, we have to close beds down, which puts more pressure on the emergency room. This is, again, this is similar to what other hospitals are doing. Again, we've engaged in hiring travel, travel nurses to help kind of bridge that gap, which has been very helpful for us and serving the community. It's also very, very expensive. And while it's been really helpful to kind of bridge as we've kind of worked through it, it's becoming very costly. And all of this together is just creating an unsustainable kind of pathway for all of healthcare, including Providence and Everett. So it's a real, it's a real community and healthcare crisis for us. So I'm not going to hit a lot of these bullet points because a lot of them are very similar to what I think you've all experienced. I will touch on just a, a couple of things. One is, as we've seen our, our rising expenses drive up pretty drastically, our reimbursement is not moving at the same pace. It's far from that. I'll give you an example. We are about 65% roughly of our inpatient hospital services are services to Medicaid and Medicare patients. So Medicaid's state-funded, and Medicare is a federally-funded program. The Medicaid program hasn't raised rates, reimbursement rates for 20 years. The Medicare funding, when they raise rates, it's, we're talking a few percentage points. There's rumors that we might get a 4% bump next year in rates, but that doesn't touch the skyrocketing rate, rates that we're seeing. So you can see the predicament that we're in currently. You know, the WISH reported that in the first quarter of 2022, Washington hospitals lost $1 billion in three months. Unfortunately for Providence as a system, our Providence health system lost a half a billion dollars in the first three months, and our hospital in Everett lost $45 million in three months. The trajectory in the second quarter doesn't look much different. And that is why we're, we're in this crisis of trying to figure out a way to be sustainable for our community, but for the healthcare system throughout the, the state and the nation. So not a sustainable picture at this point. As we think about our caregivers, you know, first of all, I have to say that we're, we're extremely proud of the caregivers at Providence and what they have sacrificed and provided this community. We couldn't be more proud of what they have done. And we've, we've tried to show our appreciation and to support them. Providence recognized this and invested $220 million in our, in all the caregivers, non-executive leadership positions, but all the caregivers throughout the system last, last fall, which were bonuses that ranged anywhere from 1,000 to 7, 7,500. Last, last summer, we were able to complete a contract with our, our Nurses Union successfully, which included adjustments, ratification bonuses. It also included some additional appreciation bonuses and shift bonuses that existed throughout the year to try to help, you know, show appreciation and, and recognize our caregivers for what they have gone through and what they have provided our community. I think it's also important to note that when the pandemic began in winter of 2020, by March of 2020, most of our communities kind of closed down. I think we all painfully remember that. Hospital services did the same. So we had a lot of outpatient services dropped. Our emergency department, which usually sees 250, 260 patients a day, the volumes dropped to 140 patients a day, and that lasted for a little bit. And as we kind of moved in the pandemic, Providence made a commitment not to furlough any caregivers. And so we kept all our caregivers whole, regardless if they were working or not, through that period of time of that lull. And that was one of our first commitments we, we made to our caregivers. And that lasted from roughly around mid-March through late in May of 2020. We also have another, other programs that we extended, including mental health services, tuition reimbursement, and just trying to kind of support our teams that are giving so much to our community. So there's a couple of things we just want to kind of close on here as it relates to some solutions that we think are pretty, pretty important. And I've talked a lot about the long-length-of-stay patients that were ready for discharge. And there's, there's a couple of, I think, changes that the state could make that could help that situation. One is just reimbursement rates for, for care for some of the post-acute settings so we can get them in the right place at the right time. Another big one that you'll hear a lot about is about guardianship. And we have some of the most restrictive guardianship laws in the state, or in the United States, our state does. And in general, we'll be, we'll be advocating for some changes this year in the state legislature to, to change those laws. Kind of a simplistic way of kind of explaining some of this is a patient who has a next of kin, the next of kin, can make medical decisions for that patient while in the hospital, including life support decisions. However, the next of kin cannot make decisions around the placement of a patient in a skilled nursing or post-acute setting. So that, that decision has to be made by somebody who has, you know, legal right to make that decision, whether it's a power of attorney, financial attorney. If a patient doesn't have that, then there's a long, arduous process to gain... If a patient doesn't have that, then there's a long, arduous process to gain approval through a guardianship. We think those, those laws and those interpretations need to change to allow us to, to more efficiently allow patients that are ready to move to a post-acute or another setting to be moved. So we'll be speaking a lot about that in the future with our state government because I think that will help reduce the number of patients in the hospital. At one point in July, that number of that we had at Providence, and that number's gone down since, but was in the upper 30s any given day. So it's a fairly significant impact for us moving forward. We also really need to have our state help fund additional education services, educators to help kind of support the education process to bring more caregivers, nurses, and techs into the marketplace. That education piece is going to be really, really, really important. And then finally, I think, you know, as we think about Medicaid and the fact that hospitals have not really had a rate adjustment in 20 years, that's just something that we need to address as well as we move forward. So I think one thing that we would ask of all of you as we kind of work through that, you, you are a huge part of our community, obviously, that we, we really need to work together and advocate together around some of the changes that we think are really important for our healthcare system. And I think what we would like to ask is, is get involved with some of these key healthcare decisions that, that you can help have a voice at the state level to help us and make some changes and help, help with the healthcare crisis in that way. And I'll just, I'll just close, and I probably missed a few points, and my colleagues here might, might jump in. But I, I think first and foremost, we're so thankful for all of our caregivers that have worked really hard and many who have come and spoken with you over the last several weeks. We can be more proud and supportive of what they have done. They are continuing to be stressed in this, in this environment. And I just, I know that for us, if we can come together as a common voice to help kind of mitigate some of the challenges that we're having in the healthcare system, I think that, that benefits our caregivers immensely and shows great appreciation. So I will stop there. I'm going to pause just in case I really missed a key point as I went through this. Janine or Jay, anything to add?
No, I just want to underscore thanking you for listening to our caregivers and our nurses, and thank you for hearing us. Our nurses are tired, our nurses are stretched. Some of the things that Darren talked about really will make a big difference. And if we can reduce the number of patients that are holding in our emergency room, waiting to get up to a bed, and those beds are filled with folks who aren't in the best place for them, they are medically stable, do not need to be in a hospital, we need to help them to, to be in a better place for them and to allow our acutely ill patients to come and be in those beds. So, thank you.
I have nothing else. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being here. We're going to go down the city council that we're going to take comments from, and questions from council members, and then I think we have some people that want to speak during our public comment period that are residents and citizens in the community. So I will start at the end there with Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you guys so much for coming today. Transparency is just so important for trust and public trust. And so being willing to, to join us today and share more about the work that you're doing is just really a tremendous showing of how dedicated you are to the community. So thank you for being here. I wanted to say, you know, as you know, staff, staff turnover is really costly, and so adequate compensation and investments in staff retention is critical. So my questions today are mostly around compensation. So I was curious to hear a little bit more in more detail about what specifically you've done to retain the current RNs that you have on staff.
Let me take it? Okay. So, so besides the, I think as we, as we went into the pandemic, we had an open contract, which we needed to get closed. And, and that was really important to get wages set for especially our nursing teams to be more competitive in the marketplace. And I think the, the agreement that was put in place in July of 2021 really moved that, moved them into a very market competitive position. In addition to that, we, you know, we've talked about the number of different bonuses, and I want to say there was the, the system-wide bonus given to all Providence caregivers. There was the ratification bonus for the nurses. There was another bonus, I, I don't get the date wrong, it may have been December or earlier in the year as well, to, to help kind of, kind of recognize the kind of the work that they're doing. In addition, as we were, were seeing a lot of the surge in, in our hospital, because we had, we had multiple periods of time where we were, had censuses that were close to 100 above our bed license, an operating license, we would offer additional extra shift bonuses for many of our caregivers that would come in and pick up an extra shift. And we expanded that and, and did that for a long period of time through Delta in the fall, through Omicron this winter. And so we did everything we could to try to encourage additional support to help the caregivers come in by, you know, rewarding. And I, I want to, I think the example of that is, I believe, a 12-hour shift for an RN, picking up an extra shift was $750 for the shift plus time and a half bonus. So we, we, we had a lot of that activity as well. In addition, you know, as I have gone, walked through many of the floors with Janine and Jay, I mean, as we've gone through this now period for a very extended period of time, what I heard from many of the nurses was, you know, the bonuses was a sign of appreciation, which was great, but the, but the working conditions on the units, so the workload, the ability to be working with other nurses and caregivers that you're used to, so not just travelers coming in for 13 weeks, which is great, but having a core staff that you can bond with and know was really important. And being able to get to a point where not just, just working with heavy loads every day, but being able to get to a point where you can work and learn and grow and, and work on skills. So there's a lot of, as we pivoted to pay over the, you know, two-year period, it became more of the work environment that became a real important element that we had to address to try to keep, keep our caregivers here. And that's what we're trying to address. Unfortunately, right now, I'll just be honest, the work environment's really, has been really hard over the last six weeks. So we're doing everything we can to recruit and to retain, but it's been, it's been a real challenge. So I don't know if there's anything else that Janine or Jay would want to add to this.
Yeah, I think I totally agree with the work environment. It is, it is rough right now. It is very stressed and it is very rough. So what we're doing, I think Darren said, we're meeting six days a week, seven days a week, 24/7. We are constantly adjusting every dial we can to make the workloads manageable, and that includes closing some beds on acute care that makes those workloads a little more manageable, really working for those, you know, the medically stable patients to be, you know, in, in other areas. But then by closing those beds in acute care and flexing up and down, there's pressure that's put on the, on the emergency department. So what we did, a number, gosh, it's probably been two months ago now, we opened up a command center. And the command center allows us to bring folks together and look at other resources that might be available to help shift to work in the emergency department and help support the care that's, and the nurses that are there. So it's a, it's a constant, I feel like I have dials in front of me, constant adjustment to really help the needs day by day, hour by hour.
I'll ju, I'll just add one more thing. We're working closely with our partners at Swedish in King County and actually through the Northwest Health Response Network and the, the DMCC throughout Snohomish County and throughout Western Washington to help level load so that a specific institution does not get overwhelmed with patients. We're really trying hard to serve the, the smaller hospitals in our geographic region in Island County, Skagit County with, with patients who they just don't have the specialty resources that we have. So again, we're working within, you know, a, a system that's really trying to do the most good for the most folks throughout our whole geographic region.
And I'll just, one final comment on, on the work that we're, and the reviews that we're having with other hospitals in King County and throughout the Swedish system. Those conversations are daily, daily conversations. And we're, we're to the point where we're looking at the nurse workloads at all the other hospitals. So we know, we know our workload in Everett. Now we're looking at the workload at First Hill and Edmonds and Cherry Hill and Issaquah. And when there's an imbalance, we request to have some patients transport. So we move patients if we need to move out of Everett to try to get care in Edmonds or another location to drop the workload on our patients. So we're working really hard as a broader healthcare community to, to try to, to try to more level load the crisis that we're all feeling.
So the nurses that do exit, they, I saw the, in one of the appendixes was the reasons that nurses are leaving hospital jobs. And I'm not quite sure how to read the charts. I'm not sure if it, how many nurses this represents, if they had more than one answer or whatnot. But besides that, I'm curious, with the reasons that nurses have given for why they have left, what changes have been made as a result of their feedback?
Yeah, so I think the chart that you're referring to is a Washington State Hospital Association chart from 2021. And there have been many others like this that look at the number of reasons that people are leaving. So I can cite for some of the things that we're hearing locally as well as nationally. We were facing a, a shortage of nurses prior to the pandemic because of the aging of our population, the aging of our population of nurses and the aging of our population of all of us needing care. So that now compiled upon the pandemic is many people are, are leaving the profession, either retiring as it's their time or they're tired, taking a break from nursing, as that's one of the most frequent I heard, was taking a break. The deaths in the, in the MICU during the, in our intensive care unit during the height of the pandemic were very difficult for nurses, if you can imagine, death after death. So very, very stressful for them. So, yeah, leaving the profession completely, taking a break, going to other areas of nursing, that's a little bit less in the, in the face of the pandemic also. So what are we doing? It's really the things that we answered. It's about, it's about our culture and it's about really trying to make our work, workflows and our, our environment something that, a place where people want to practice nursing. And we have many, many nurses who continue to choose to work at Providence and practice nursing at Providence. And I'm so grateful for that. Every nurse, every nurse has an option today of, of where they want to work. And we have many, many nurses that are here every day and showing up and choosing Providence. So we listen to them. That's what I want to tell you, is we listen, we round with them, we have open forums. Sometimes there are things that we can't fix. We can't fix it today, but boy, I give my 110% to get us back to the core staffing we need to be at.
And of these reasons listed, I don't see compensation as one of the options. So I was curious, how does Providence's compensation of RNs rank with other comparable medical institutions?
Yeah. I can speak to that, that when we completed our contract last year, we were at market, we were at a market value that was comparable to those in our area.
And then I was curious if there's any, currently any consideration to increase compensation for nurses or staff at Providence, or if there's considerations to bring back the bonuses and overtime, extra shifts, if that, if those have maybe sunsetted?
Sure. Well, I'll, I'll share that this, this, we have four collective bargaining agreements at, at Providence and Everett, the nurses, and we have a technical professional and a, a service and maintenance without OPIU. So we closed the, we completed the nursing agreement just, just about a year ago, just over a year ago. The other three contracts were coming open at various times throughout this year. We were able to kind of forge a different negotiating structure in a partnership with all the unions, which had worked really well. So we were able to close all of those contracts well before their termination date, which is, has been unusual for us, unfortunately. But I know the technical contract, I think it was technical professional was a couple of months early, professional was like four or five months early, and the service and maintenance, I think we completed in April, late April, early May, and it wasn't set to expire till the end of October. And at this time, we're able to not just implement agreements, but also implement pay adjustments at that time as well, so we could bring our caregivers' pay ranges back up to the market that was in, in the community. So within the last year, we've completed all four of our contracts, you know, and the last three in a very timely way. The service and maintenance contract was completed in three, three sessions, three negotiating sessions. We're, we're really proud of that, and I think it was needed for our caregivers and our community. So as we think about additional financial considerations, our, our challenge is, is twofold. One, what I'm hearing loud and clear from our caregivers is the working environment and the work, the workload. So to manage the workload, we can manage it two different ways. One is, we need to make sure that we don't have patients in the hospital that we need to put resources to, that could be somewhere else. And currently, that's 100. And as I think about 41 patients, 42 patients in our emergency department waiting for a bed, if we solved half of that, we would have that burden lifted off our workforce in the ED. That, that addresses kind of workload issues. And so that, I, it's been very clear to all of, I've, everybody I've talked to on the floors that work, the working conditions, the workload is the number one dissatisfier. So we need to address that. That's through managing, you know, capacity and making sure all the hosp, all the patients in our hospital are patients that really need to be in the hospital. And then secondly, is growing the workforce and making sure we get more nurses, more caregivers into our workforce to share that load. The combination of two is really what we need to do. And we need to do it in a way that doesn't lose $45 million in three months, because we can't, if, I mean, our, our system, our hospitals cannot continue to sustain the staggering losses. So it's, it's a tough, it's a tough balance. And like I said, we are, we are absolutely in crisis. And so we're focused on how do we create a better work environment? And that's really reducing unnecessary capacity, bringing more caregivers to serve and reduce the workload on our caregivers.
Thank you. So as city councilmembers, our primary responsibility is the health and safety and welfare of people in, in the city of Everett. And so if an Everett resident is experiencing a medical emergency, should they be concerned that Providence can provide them with adequate medical care?
Do you want me?
Yeah, I'm happy to take that one. Absolutely, yes. We have challenges with, as you've heard, with capacity and staffing. But our, our mission and our focus is to take care of people that have acute, sometimes life-threatening medical or medical conditions or accidents. We continue to have 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week in-house medical teams, intensive care unit teams, and trauma teams for just those kind of very severe illnesses and injuries that occur throughout our community. So yes.
So yes, they should be concerned?
Yes, we can take care of them and want to take care of them.
Just wanted to make, get that out. Okay. Because what I, oh, for sure. Yeah, yeah.
I want to make this point. I, I think our community should be concerned about the state of the healthcare system in this state and in our hos, in our city, because it's very fragile financially in that capacity. So I, I, while Dr. Cook is correct in stating, you know, the, the abilities that we have, we are triaging and picking and choosing who we care for. And the, and the, the trajectory that we are on in healthcare in this state is not one that's going to be sustainable and, and could be really catastrophic if we don't turn it around. And I, and I think that's a message that we need to make sure our community hears.
And, and again, I don't want to put too fine a point on it, but we, we have, I think, done a good job at taking care of those patients that I described. The, the patients who are challenged, we have challenges with, are those who, you know, need, need hospital care, but they, it's not so much life-threatening care. And so, you know, that's where we have to make these tough decisions. Who gets their surgery? Who, you know, has to wait in the emergency department for a bed to open up on the unit? And, and it's that, you know, it's that subgroup, which is a very large subgroup of, of people who I think that we struggle with the most, and frankly, other hospitals around the Puget Sound region also struggle with the most.
Thank you. Yeah, we've been hearing from nurses over the last few weeks that inadequate staffing levels is not helping them to provide adequate healthcare. So I definitely agree, and I appreciate, there's a line on the slide mentioning that it's a public health crisis, and I agree, it's a public health emergency. So appreciate you. So appreciate you being here today. Thank you.
Excuse me, Councilmember Vogel. Thank you very much for being here. I really was in tune to watching you speak and, you know, listening with vision. So I appreciate what I saw, and I know that it's very difficult to stand here because you're not on trial. But maybe you are, it's just not a legal proceeding. I, on the one hand, I, you know, I, I appreciate what I've heard. I don't like it, but I appreciate what I've heard, and I'm very glad to hear that you are hearing our nurses, that staffing is abysmal and it is affecting the whole community. And that's all I'm going to say right now. So thank you for being here, and thank you nurses for being here and watching and making this happen. And staff and, you know, colleagues, whatever you're called. My fellow council members, thank you as well. So that's all. Thank you. Councilmember Zerlingo.
Well, I do appreciate your coming here. I know this is difficult. The, the term crisis is often way overused. It's not just a difficult situation, it's when things are veering towards something where there are serious problems. And this does seem like a crisis pretty clearly from a number of aspects. So I'm trying to understand that better. Other council members understand some of this more than I do, so I'll defer mostly to their questions. I had a couple of, couple of questions though, specifically, are there measures that were taken during the regulatorily, governmentally, governor's orders during the worst parts of the pandemic that are now becoming an impediment to you or inappropriate at this time?
I'm, I'm, I'm thinking through it. I, I would say, you know, for us at Everett, many of the decisions and mandates that our governor made, we were already following for the most part pretty closely because we felt the, the constraint on us early. I think everybody remembers the end of last year, or in the last year, beginning of this year, when the Omicron variant hit and we, you know, we were quickly had 208 COVID inpatients in our hospital facility. We had already converted an OR floor into an inpatient floor and re, and removed staff around. And so while the governor at that point put a mandate in to pause non-essential surgeries, we were pretty much there already. So for us, I'm, I can't think of one that was put in place because of the pandemic that I think is, is creating challenges for us.
All right. I guess, you know, gi, given an obligation that you have as a hospital in this county to sort of take all comers, I had sort of generally felt like that also kind of imposed an obligation on the community to support you, to sustain your ability to, to keep that obligation. It sounds like that's gotten seriously out of balance here. Tell me if I'm wrong about that. I mean, I know different states run county hospitals in different ways with different kinds of support.
I mean, I think, I mean, I, I think when we look at healthcare, it's very complex, obviously. That's the, that's the gee whiz understatement of the year. And when we are dealing with co, complex problems like this, it does require the community as a, as a large to help rally and provide a voice around what is important to change. And so I, I don't want to say that the community's not supportive of Providence. I feel this community has been extremely supportive of Providence, and I think that's why we've grown and have been able to provide the great services that we have over the years. But I do think now is the time for the community voices to be heard around some of the key issues, as we've mentioned in the presentation. And I think, you know, we were looking for all of you as community leaders to help us in this situation as well. And I think, you know, it's, the voice of change comes from many different loc, different perspectives, right? It's not, the healthcare teams have been saying this to the, to the state and legislators for years and years and years. What we need is the voice to come from everybody, from our staffing teams or our unions, our, our city councils. We need to speak together as one to really solve this problem.
Yeah, the, the role of state's an interesting one in this case. I guess, part of this is reimbursement from insurance companies. They're always sharp with their pencils, and the conditions have changed during the times, I'm sure, after rate setting. And I guess, is there a role here also for action by the state insurance commissioner's office? They, they regulate that part. I wonder, is there any, is there any missing piece there?
Do you want, you want?
Well, I, I'm a little, well, I'm quite a bit out of my league here, but Darren, you know, mentioned that the rates for Medicare, excuse me, Medicaid reimbursement have not changed over the past 20 years. And, you know, we can see what the pace of healthcare spending has been. So I mean, I think we're behind the eight ball there. And, and, you know, one thing I would, I would say that I believe that we as, as a hospital and as an anchor institution really in the city of Everett, we've probably been remiss about communicating our challenges throughout the pandemic. I mean, these, these challenges we have are, are new to you probably, and, and they, but they've been ongoing for some time, and we've, they've kind of just come to a head. And, and I feel like we could do a better job, and we need to do a better job communicating with you all and the general public about a lot of these issues that, that are complicated, yeah, but they affect all of us. And, and I think we all want the same thing. We all want a hospital and a healthcare system that's robust and that, you know, has the, the resilience to, you know, take a pandemic and, and not, you know, have as many challenges as we've suffered.
Well, I'm thinking about partly time scale, because this is something that's evolving rapidly and getting more difficult rapidly. And, you know, Medicare at the state level, medic, sorry, Medicare at the federal level is Medicaid at the state level, but there's the regular consumer insurance market. And, and that's something I think is largely regulated by the office of the state insurance commissioner. So I'm trying to understand if that kind of thing where time scales are shorter and action could be, could be faster. But I guess all I can say is unless there's other guidance from you, and if that, if there is that, certainly feel free to send it to me afterwards, because I'd like.
Yeah, I mean, I would love to, to learn more on my side. I'm, I will definitely reach out.
Okay. And we've heard some public comment from nurses about particular concerns about Providence. And I, I interpreted that as, as telling us that things are worse there than other local hospitals. Do you see the situation as fundamentally similar to that of the other hospitals? Or if it's different or more acute here? Can you, in, in what way is that?
You can start, and then I can finish.
Okay. So I, I would, I think it depends on the day and, and the time. So I would, I would start by saying, I think we've noticed since the beginning of the pandemic as, as the virus spread, and that Soomish County was affected pretty early in that, in that process. And if you look at the different waves per se, Soomish County tended to lead the waves, each wave. And as we looked at capacity issues, I think Providence, Everett, and Soomish County tended to be the first hospital, maybe us in Harborview, that would feel it first before other hospitals would feel it. But, but as I look at the situation today, and as we mentioned earlier, that we are on calls and really looking at ratios and situations and staffing levels in the EDs throughout different Swedish organizations, I'm finding that today in August, that we're very similar. And some days, one area's a little better than another, or one hospital's better than another, but, but we're seeing very similar challenges. I would say that Everett has had the challenges a bit longer than other hospitals, but at this point, we're seeing a lot of similarities.
And are you, go ahead.
Oh, well, and, and very briefly, you know, I think Providence and Everett is, is unique in our area in that we are both a safety net hospital for really all of Snohomish County and parts north as well. And also, we are the, the referral institution for really sophisticated, high-level cardiac care, cancer care, trauma care. And so we're kind of all of this. And, and I think that the, the challenges in King County, I'll just give it for instance, are, are more diffuse. I mean, there's, they're just more inpatient resources. So, you know, my, my sense is that yes, they are definitely strained in King County, but it's a different, it's a different thing because, because it is, I think, a little bit more spread out, and I think the data would support that.
And last question, are you still using travel nurses? And what proportion of your nurses are those on, approximately now?
Yeah, we have used travel nurses at Providence for as long as I can remember. It had really been used primarily for people who were out on leave and, and sick calls and that sort of thing prior to the pandemic, or when we have a new, a medical record system putting in, we'd bring in travelers. And then during the pandemic, definitely enhanced our, our care teams with travelers. The numbers have gone down some, and we continue to have travelers in many different areas supporting our teams. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Last, I look, we had 274 travelers.
Not 275.
Thank you. Councilmember Toohey.
Council Vice President Toohey.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank all of you for being here tonight. We understand it's a great challenge that you guys, all of the caregivers da, daily have to face. And we, I thank you so much for, for that and extending your day longer by coming in and really explaining a lot of things to us. We appreciate that. So the two things I came away with from a lot of the conversations with, from the nurses were working conditions, which I think we're all in agreement, and you guys are, are working hard on that every day, and then compensation. And I think a lot of the questions that I had have already been asked on that. What we see here with our police force is we have to really work hard to recruit, and we have bonuses. So I assume, and I think you mentioned that you guys have some incentives for hiring, and that's on a continual basis.
Yeah, we do have, for, for new folks coming in, there are some hiring bonuses associated with that, with some longevity, once they take on.
Okay. Okay. And then as far as nursing, visiting nurses, you know, there's a, quite a large discrepancy in the pay rate. And I know the more you bring in, then the, the more you're paying out for salaries for, you know, the same amount of people, but you're paying a lot more. Is, I don't know if there's any way that you can fix that ratio so that it gets a little easier for the budget as well as the offset some of the other nurses that are there daily?
Yeah, so you're speaking to, to traveling nurses?
Yes.
Yeah. So the rates across the nation, certain, some of the peaks of the Omicron and even the prior viruses were very high. And across the nation, very high. Across the nation has started to come down and actually is, is much lower than it had been. We've been fortunate, we have had travel nurses with us for, you know, a 13-week contract or a second 13-week contract, who are now looking for homes and are, are hiring. They're going to other hospitals or to our hospital and becoming caregivers with us. So the rates are coming down, and are down substantially from what they had been.
Okay. And then just one other quick question I have is, you know, the recent surge in COVID illnesses, are you seeing an influx in the hospital? Is it like it was like, you know, last year? Or what, what does that look like?
Yeah, so our, yeah, our inpatient COVID census is really, really very modest compared to what it has been. Darren mentioned it was as high, it was over 200.
Is it down or high?
So it's currently lower than it has been from its peak of 208, I believe. It's around 40 now. Now, not, some of those people, we test everyone who comes into the hospital for COVID. And so some people are in for a heart attack, and we test them, and they just happen to be COVID positive. Others come in with COVID pneumonia, and that's, and so we don't really have a good way to sort those out. But our, your inpatient census has been pretty stable for several months.
Okay, great. Well, thank you again for being with us tonight. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Fossey.
Thank you. I wanted to first say how much I appreciate you coming here and explaining this and providing some of the additional slides for us to, to address some of our other questions that we had previously had on data. And to recognize the difficulty that you're dealing with in some of the things that are higher level, you know, concerns and issues and problem-solving needing as far as the reimbursement rates and a lot of the, the border issues. So that, just wanted to recognize that, totally aware of those, and, and I seem to understand the, we all grasped that's kind of some big issues that is part of the solution going forward. I have a, a list of a few questions that I just want to follow up on some of the slides and then some of the other things with retention or hiring. You had provided that the top reasons for registered nurses leaving hospital jobs, but that seemed to be more of a, a state level. Do you have specifics on the top reasons, who, how many people have left in the last 12 months, and more specifics with regards to that for Providence Everett?
Well, I, I don't have the statistics about the reason that the, the state level was kind of a poll that was done. We haven't polled a poll. I would say, my impression is the reasons of why some of nurses have left the profession in 2021 may be different in 2022. I mean, the extension of the pandemic and the, frankly, the, the surge of, of, and workforce issues that everybody's feeling in the last two months, I think is, is also driving maybe different reasons for, for leaving. I mean, if I, if, I've heard offhand a number of reasons that, that Janine has already kind of touched upon, some just are tired and they can't continue to manage this kind of a work stress on a daily basis, needing to break. Others are leaving because the, really the work environment's become very tough and they can't sustain that as well. So there's a variety of reasons.
Can you give me a specific number of how many nurses have left Providence Everett in the last 12 months?
I can give you a number similar to that, because I, it might, and we can, we can get you that number as well. But as we look at the, the number of nurses that we hire and the number of nurses that have left, over the last, the first six months of 2022, I think we've had 91 nurses, more nurses leave than we have hired. And as I've looked at some other hospitals, I'm seeing similar numbers.
So 91 had left?
Nine, so there's a little bit, it's a net, the net loss of 91.
The deficit.
Right. So more nurses have left than we, but we hired some. But the difference between what we've hired and who has left has been 91.
And of the percentage that left, how many of them actually did exit interviews? Was it all of them? Is that part of your process?
I can, I can't answer that question. I would need to kind of follow up, and I can follow up with our HR and see how many were willing to do exit interviews.
How, how many nurses have you been able to hire in the last six months or 12 months?
Do you have a number?
I don't have an exact number.
Qualified nurses, not just anybody.
Yeah, so I, I would, I, I know that.
Order.
I can give you a, a very rough number. That I would, I would guess it's probably in roughly 10 to, 10 to 15 a month. Is that a fair range?
And, and are those travel nurses or are those core?
Core nurses.
Core nurses, okay. Okay.
And we can get you the exact number, but that's roughly what it is.
We understood from the nurses that there were hallway beds that were added. When that happened, were you able to add additional nurses to staff those hallway beds? And if so, what kind of, what's the ratio situation there?
So I believe what you're referring to is when we began to have borders. So what we call in-borders are patients who are inpatients waiting to go upstairs. We opened up an area for those borders. So those 15 beds were taken over by patients waiting to go upstairs. So the staffing levels were not changed, but there were beds, hallway beds added to accommodate the continuing flow of inpatient, or excuse me, of ED patients.
So you didn't add any nurses?
So you didn't add any nurses for the additional patients?
Those, um, patients that were inpatients were cared for by inpatient nurses at that time.
Okay. And that was in the ER?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, in a pod that, yeah.
Okay.
So what is, you know, over the last two and a half years, we, we've ebbed and flowed through a number of things. I, I will, I, I think we need to kind of share that when we, when we saw the Delta potential surge in the fall of 2021, we proactively hired enough ICU nurses at really extremely high traveler rates because we were worried about the surge of ICU COVID patients. And on Sep- on September 1st of 2021, which is a holiday, and I remember we all got together and we opened 16 additional ICU beds, uh, to, in addition to the 48 beds that we, uh, typically operate. And we were able to open those beds because we brought in a large number of travelers at very expensive rates to manage the surge. We filled 14 of those beds and managed through the crisis. I think what's happened as we've moved away from that surge into other surge, we brought in more travelers, but we started, the, the man became more on acute care and less on the ICU because, with the Omicron. So at that point, we started acute care staffing, a lot of the surge in the, uh, emergency department and 300 pod where we were using acute care nurses to care for. I will say in the last eight weeks or six weeks, thereabouts, it has been a challenge because we don't have enough acute care nurses, nor do we have enough emergency room nurses. And so every day we're working, we're looking at the number of patients in the hospital, where they're at, what the workload is on all the different units, and we're moving staff around and we're trying to manage that workload. And in that, the emergency department has been managing the care of the, of the patients in the emergency department, even if they were waiting for an inpatient bed. So they're technically an inpatient. That has put a bigger burden on the inpatient staff. And as those, that workload shifts in real time, we try to make adjustments based on what staff we have in the hospital. Sometimes we're making other adjustments to put additional workload on an inpatient unit, send down a helping hand into the emergency department to help that. Or we'll, we'll be on the phone with our counterparts in the middle of the night to try to get an ICU patient or two out of the ED, move to another hospital to take the burden. But that workload goes up and down, but it has been a challenge in the ED over the last six, six weeks or so. And that, I, I suspect that's what you're hearing.
Yeah, it sounds like a, a real juggle. And, uh, so the last six weeks, do you know how many nurses have left? Or an approximate number?
I do not.
Okay. How many nurses are working in the ER today?
Again, I think the staffing level in the emergency department moves based on time of day. The peak, the peak, uh, staffing level for RNs are typically 33, uh, during the peak time. And there is not uncommon that, um, they'll open up with half that staffing to manage, to manage it. And that is, that is the challenge that we've had in terms of moving staff around. And that's been a fairly, uh, consistent issue for us recently.
Have you had any issues with patients, um, escaping from your behavioral health areas? Your facilities?
No, I, I mean, it has, has a, a patient who maybe is in the emergency department that needs, needs, uh, needs to be held, escaped before, that's happened before. Um, but I'm not aware of any consistent issue with, with that.
Okay. And can you tell me what your, um, patient to nurse ratio is generally on your, like surgical horse?
Yeah. So our workloads are medical surgical, I'm assuming you're talking about, and we have telemetry and, um, we have staffing plans that we submit, um, you know, to, to the state. Um, we really look at workloads that are based on acuity of the patients. But in a general rule, um, when we're staffed to our staffing plan where we'd like to be, um, a telemetry unit may be one nurse to four patients and a med, medical or surgical unit may be one nurse to five patients.
Okay. So you hadn't changed those ratios recently to one to six?
We haven't changed our staffing plan, but we've had to stretch the workloads because we simply do not have enough nurses to work on those. Yeah.
And of the slides that you submitted, you had been talking about the, um, nursing unit practice chairs, uh, and your nursing strategic plan. Can you tell me what that is?
Yeah, we have a system that we call nursing governance. Um, and nursing governance is kind of an, an all, all call for all nurses to be involved and have a voice in their practice. Uh, we have nursing congress that's held once a quarter, which is an all, all nurse staff meeting, um, to share, um, projects that they're working on. And, and there are a number of different committees that feed up into congress. Um, one of the things that we work on every year is a nursing strategic plan. So we, we get, uh, input from all nurses. You know, we have flip charts in their break rooms and lots of ways for them to give input. And then at congress, we kind of compo- compiled all of those ideas and put it into a strategic plan. So I think the, the five pillars of that strategic plan are listed on the, um, in the slide. And the one that we, um, continue to work most heavily on is the care and well-being of our nurses. Um, so that's where a lot of the ideas that, that are focused on there, on mentoring, on precepting and then supporting the mental health needs of our, of our caregivers, nurses in specific for our nursing strategic plan, comes from them.
Okay. I know that, uh, you keep relaying to, um, we're kind of defaulting to the, the workload question, um, and that being kind of the, the main stressing point. And, uh, what are you doing currently to kind of reduce some of those pressures on nurses? When you're reaching out to nurses, are you incentivizing them to come in, the ones that are able to, to fill in, um, some of those staffing, uh, working overtime and whatnot currently, um, to reduce some of that burden workload for those that can't handle the extra?
Yeah, I say, I would say the, um, you know, we, we've been at this for two and a half years. Um, and we've required a lot of our nurse staffing. Um, and what we've seen pretty, pretty loud and clear is that there's only so much that they can give. And we've asked a lot during the previous surges and, uh, implemented, uh, bonus, bonus programs to support it. But what we're, what is happening now because of the duration of the situation is that the real need is to bring it, to reduce the work, workload by, um, again, having patients not be in the hospital, that nobody be there. And then secondly, bring in more caregivers. We've really, when we've worked our caregivers so hard, there's only, you can only do that so long, and then we're going to see an exodus. Um, and that's what we're trying to avoid. And so we're really focusing on how we can increase, um, you know, the available workforce in, in the hospital, reduce the demand on them, uh, in appropriate levels, so we can have a sustainable solution moving forward.
That sounds like a, an approach for more of a kind of long-term sustainability. My, my concern and what I've been hearing from the nurses is that there seems to be an urgent need for something done now with a mass exodus and, uh, the, the concerns and impacts that might be having on our commu- like our community directly here. Uh, so that's kind of where some of my questions are coming from. It's more of the immediate urgent need and what's, what's being done around that. Um, it seems like you, you, you do have, uh, some ideas of how this can be fixed in the long term or at least helped. Uh, but, uh, a lot of the, the urgency of what's happening and going on, uh, is concerning to me as well as my neighbors. Uh, so I, I was wondering with your nursing strategic plan, uh, is that also part of the complaint process, um, that the nurses have or is that completely separate?
No, that's completely separate. I would like to talk a little bit more though about, you know, as we paint this picture, there simply aren't enough nurses.
Yeah.
And it's not going to be a quick fix for there to be enough nurses. So we've got to do things differently. So one of the other big focuses that we haven't mentioned is really kind of changing, how do we enhance the nurses that we have and the care that they're delivering with other disciplines? So really looking to add members to the care team, um, to allow nurses to work atop of license and to care for our patients. So it's bringing in, um, LPNs, licensed practical nurses, bringing in more CNAs in a different way, our nursing assistants, um, nurse tax who are students, um, nursing students and allowing them to work up to the level of their education. So we can't hire our way out of this in a year, um, or in a week, or in a month, or maybe in a couple of years. We've got to change what we're doing. So we've got two different units that are working on, um, ways to help use, um, kind of an enhanced model and bringing in, uh, new members or different, different ways of using these members to the team.
Okay. So you're, you're simply just don't get enough applicants then applying for the positions?
There just aren't enough nurses out there. I mean, the, really our focus has got to be on, um, helping to educate, to bring more nurses in, uh, to our education system. Our schools are doing such a wonderful job in bringing us new nurses, but they're kind of tapped out. Um, they are, they, uh, need support in bringing in more educators and, and overall bringing in more new nurses.
I think I'm going to defer to my colleague to, to carry on. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwab.
Well, my colleagues have been pretty thorough, so, um, I might be a little over the map because I just kind of have had a few things that maybe just weren't covered. First of all, thank you, um, for being here. Um, this is a lot and I know you guys, um, I just want to recognize you as pillars in our community. Um, the hospital doesn't get a lot of attention unless there are, the issues brought to us though. And so the three of you and the way that you carry is enormous. And I just want to recognize as a community member, it's, uh, I can't even explain. I can't imagine what you guys are going through right now, so I appreciate it. I also appreciate you recognizing the, the staffing, that problem and, and recognizing the importance of our caregivers and the nurses. And so I, I thank you for that. Really, your institution is, um, one of the key quality of life issues for our town. Whenever you get a rating or you have an outside agency give a rating for your city or your community, they always look at healthcare, right? And you guys know that. And I just want to recognize the importance of what you're doing. And, you know, as you know, the, the nurses are very, um, important to us also. They live and work in our community and they're part of your staff. Um, they're such an integral part of what they do. So, I'm thankful for them for bringing these issues to the, to the table too. Um, like I said, I had just a couple of things that weren't necessarily covered. Um, I know just from my past experience, um, some, some events that can happen in the ER and the hospital, um, that can really negatively impact the, the Sentinel events. And I was wondering if there was an increase, like if compared to a pre-COVID versus today? Because I know those really impact individuals and they're very passionate and can have an impact on the, on the staff.
I can take that one.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, you know, we are required to track serious safety events and report them to, um, CMS. Uh, and yeah, I will, I will admit, there have, there has been an uptick in serious safety events. I wouldn't call it a spike, but you've, we've seen that here and we've also seen it throughout Washington State and the country. The, the incidence of, of, uh, hospital acquired infections everywhere has gone up, particularly in the, in the first six months of 2022, as the staffing crisis has hit. Because a lot of these really are, um, things that, uh, are mitigated by, you know, really hands-on care at the bedside that is, is thin right now. So yeah, it, they, they have gone up some and we are on that. We have, and so all the, there, there are five or six different categories of hospital acquired infections that we track and report. And we have, we have teams associated with every one of those to see where our gaps are and to try to drive those down. We actively manage that.
Thank you. Um, like I said, I'm a little over the ma- around the map here. Um, I, I really appreciate, uh, your suggestions about policy solutions. And I think this body and others, uh, really need to work together. Not saying we haven't in the past, but, um, in light of the condition of, of things in our healthcare. Um, I know the mayor has been working, and their staff's been working hard. Um, Deputy Mayor Harper kind of takes on that team of government affairs and there's a few council members here on that committee. So I, I hope that we can work together, um, and work on some legislative solutions and some funding, um, sources for, for our system. So I, I, I hope you guys can pledge to work with us a little closer on that. I know we do. Um, also, I know this is a little side note. Uh, are you working, I know you're working with Everett Community College? And how is that program working, um, as far as the training for nurses and?
Gosh, Everett Community College has been such a great partner to us for many, many years. So we serve as a clinical placement for them. Um, and often when we have nurses working in our hospital as a student, they like the environment and, and come to work for us as a, as an employee. So it's a great partnership with us.
Okay. And is there, uh, things maybe even legislatively that we can work? I know there's college funding bills and that sort of thing that.
That's it.
Seems to be a good training ground for our community.
Yeah, absolutely. We have many people wanting to get into nursing school that cannot because of the capacity. So yeah, absolutely.
Like I told you, I was going to be all over the map there.
Yes.
Yeah. So I just, thank you for your passion and your willingness to come and speak to us. And, um, we appreciate it. And I hope you would do some more follow-up as we, um, continue to work on these challenges together. So thank you.
Thank you. And, um, I won't belabor it. I've, uh, my colleagues have had a lot of great questions and comments. Um, I think the last time that we had this illustrious level of management group at the city council was probably, uh, when I was sitting on this side of the dais and we were considering the expansion of the hospital. Um, and so that's been many years ago. Um, still think that was a, a great decision and, uh, we're really glad to have you here. So we really appreciate you and your leadership. And it sounds like you're struggling through some really serious challenges, um, which are hard for you and at least as hard, if not harder, on the people who are really on the front lines of that. And so while I totally appreciate your staffing challenges, it's not really this body's, um, you know, it's not our job to really help you manage your staffing levels. It's interesting to us. And so I think we're all asking just out of interest to kind of try to understand that. Um, you're in a, what I, what I think about the nursing shortage and in my day job, I do consulting in other industries and there are many, many places where we're just going to see challenges with staffing, teachers and, um, just every other area. We've been experiencing it here with our police department and trying to have people. So our, it starts at the beginning. Our education system has not kept up with the needs and, you know, higher ed does not do a good job of planning that far in advance. Probably could use some help with that. Um, but we also look at what wages are being paid. And I mean, I know that we've done this at the city as well to say, gee, you know, what I can see is that the economics of nursing wages is just not at the right level. And then that's not your fault. It's just the system's fault. And whenever you have shortages of certain, um, skill sets, you have, uh, you know, you have a challenge in getting those people to come to work for you. And the difference with healthcare over some other industries is that you're highly regulated. So your revenue sources are set by somebody else who may or may not be, um, experiencing or making, keeping track of what that nursing, um, labor cost is. And I think that we haven't found the market clearing price for nurses. That's why we have a shortage. I mean, at some point, if you're paying them more than the president of the United States, everyone wants to be a nurse and then we have to be able to figure that out. So, um, so I think some of my colleagues that are asking about wages and bonuses are, and we're all thinking of it that way. And yet I can appreciate that in a highly regulated industry like healthcare, it's not a very simple equation for you because you don't change the revenue side. And I understand that. So, um, further, if you pay, teach your nurses more now, um, you have the, uh, less ability to, um, hire more nurses, which is really a, an essential part for the health and safety of all of our communities. So I do not envy you that, um, challenge and hope that you and, and, uh, the, the unions that you're working with can really work through those challenges. And if there's things that we can do to help you. Certainly, um, we've got a couple council members that are working on a letter or some kind of legislation or just some action that the council can take, um, that would maybe help provide, uh, some support for you with some of those legislative priorities or other, um, challenges. So I cer- we'd certainly like to be helpful to you. And at the same time, we really feel acutely what your staff are going through as well. So thank you for being here. And I think some of your, um, people will be here to speak to us during public comment. Any last questions or comments? Mayor Franklin, did you have anything to add? Mayor Franklin, did you have anything to add?
No, thank you. You summarized it very well, Council President Stonyifer. I very much appreciate you all coming on such short notice to share this information with all of us and answer so many questions, and, yeah, just very much empathize with all of the nurses and the situation that they're experiencing at the hospital, and I appreciate your honesty in articulating that it is not, that it is a crisis situation. And also, just appreciate how hard it is to balance what you're trying to do to improve that as quickly as possible. Thank you for your partnership and your willingness to work with me. I appreciate meeting with you quarterly and getting updates, and I think it's great to have these updates to our full council, too, so thank you.
Well, thank you. It's been an honor to be here, and it's an honor to serve in this community. So, whatever help you can give us to make sure we can continue to do that is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to move on to our public comment period. Angie, do we have, I know we have at least a few people signed up to speak.
Good evening, President Stonyifer. Yes, we have no written comments, but three people that have signed up to speak. So, I will call on those who are remote first and then those in chambers. When I call your name, if possible, please turn on your camera, unmute yourself, and give your name and city for the record. Kelly, you have a time limit of five minutes, so at four minutes and 30 seconds, I will ask you to begin to wrap up. You can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, my name's Kelly Johnson. I'm a nurse at Providence Everett. I live in Seattle. To preface the statement I prepared tonight, I want to make some notes to Providence's presentation. I know the position that they are in is a difficult one, but it does not compare to the difficult positions nurses are in today. Only one of the slides addressed what they are doing to retain full-time nurses at Providence. The other slides addressed to what barriers they state exist impacting the staffing crisis at hand. These other barriers address issues like long length of stay patients, issues with reimbursement and cost of supplies in their presentation, which are valid and are important to the conversation of the state of hospitals in Washington today, but it does not address how they plan to improve the staffing crisis right now, this week, or the weeks to come. Earlier this year, during the state legislative session with House Bill 1868 on the table, a statute that established staffing ratios and penalties for hospitals that violated the staffing ratios, hospitals and their leaders had a unified message to the elected officials that this is a pipeline issue, that there are not enough nurses to fill the vacancies at the bedside. Providence stated that there is a shortage of 6,100 nurses in Washington alone. Those numbers are purely dependent on what questions are being asked. The Washington State Nursing Association asked different questions and obtained data from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, with the latest employment numbers showing that there are 120,000 nurses in Washington with active or pending licenses, and only 59,000 of those RNs in Washington are either working full-time or part-time. They were also able to show the number of licensed nurses in Washington continues to grow, along with the student enrollment into nursing programs. Retaining nurses is not a new issue. It's a chronic issue of hospitals continuing to foster work environments that prioritize financial gains and curbing financial losses by chronically understaffing all departments in the hospital and having toxic work environments that are simply not sustainable for the well-being of nurses and their health. The national turnover rate for RNs was 18.7% in 2020. That's about 1 in 5 nurses, and I think it's safe to assume that this has only increased during the pandemic. It has been shown time and again that the top reasons nurses leave their jobs, leave the field, is due to inadequate staffing. Inadequate staffing leads to burnout in a stressful work environment, which also rank highly as reasons nurses leaving their jobs. Providence is aware that this is the reason they are losing nurses now, that they are having a retention issue. Before I go any further of how hospital systems prioritize investing in the admin staff and not their nurses, it's important that I share that The New York Times published this year that Providence works with private equity firms to take their $12 billion in cash, invest it into Wall Street for high returns, except for in 2022, Wall Street went into a bear market, meaning record losses. So, when we're talking about costs and financial losses, it's important that we're talking about that, too. I want to address my following statements to the executives of hospitals, the executives that are above the team like Darren, Janine, and Jay, because I do believe these three, if they could do more, they would do more. I direct my statements to CEOs like Rod Hockman. Hospital executives are not new to having to compete with other companies for qualified employees. Rod Hockman earned about $10 million in 2019, with the total of their top 10 executives earning $36 million. Earlier this year, when Washington hospitals were asked why hospital executives and leaderships received record salaries and bonuses in 2020 and 2021, and nurses did not, the statement they released was that administrative staff had at-risk pay, nurses didn't because we didn't negotiate for it. For admin staff, it was deemed necessary to provide record wages and bonuses in order to compete with Amazon, Zillow, and Microsoft. Why is this same concept not applied to recruiting and retaining nurses? We are crucial to the medical care patients receive. Nurses have been asking for at-risk pay since 2020, and to this day, Providence will not even discuss it. Regarding competitive wages, at the current travel rate of wages being offered right now for every two travel nurses, it is the same cost for three full-time RNs with five years of experience. And yet, with how much they are willing to invest to have travel nurses, at-risk pay is still not an option. In their one page dedicated to their efforts to address their staffing crisis, did they say, how do they plan to compete to recruit and retain staff?
30 seconds, Kelly.
With no nurses, thank you, with no nurses being hired, no new travel nurses being hired in weeks, how does losing staff with no nurses to fill the vacancies improve the work environment? As you guys move forward, as everyone in the community moves forward and looks into addressing this staffing crisis, I ask, is everything that Providence shared today and what they're doing to retain nurses enough? Or are you asking, why isn't more being done? Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Trevor, has Trevor arrived? Okay. If you could please come to the podium and begin by giving your full name and city that you reside in for the record, and you have been given a limit of five minutes, so at 4 minutes, 30 seconds, I'll give you a heads up.
Sounds good. Thank you. Hello, City Council, Mayor Cassie Franklin. Hello, everyone. My name is Trevor Jendam. I work at Providence Regional Medical Center in Everett. I live in Warm Beach. I've got a little bit to say to you. There's a lot to unpack. That was a giant presentation, a lot of stuff happening there. I want to thank Cassie Franklin for being here. She's the mayor of the city, first female mayor. It's awesome. Also, part-time spokesman for CEO Darren Reddick. A couple weeks ago, Cassie Franklin came to this place and said that Darren Reddick was acutely aware of the staffing crisis. When Mary Fossey asked him questions about how many nurses they were retaining, how many they had lost over the last year, he really wasn't sure. It does not sound acutely aware to me. From what he ballparked, it looked like they were hiring about 120 over the course of a year, just did a little quick mathy poo, and they were losing over 200. That should make everyone here nauseous with anxiety. They were net down 91 nurses. That's multiple units. That should scare people. That's a crisis. They say this is going to be, this isn't catastrophic yet. Are we sure? They're closing units. They're saying, hey, our hospitals are cluttered up because we have long length of stay. We can't, we don't have anywhere to send them because you've got a shortage in the SNFs. Are you sure it's not catastrophic? Are we sure? Because that sounds to me like the system isn't working. The ED is overwhelmed. We've seen for weeks ED nurses come in here, telling, saying that people are dying in the lobby, that you've got hospital beds that are in the hallway, and we're acting like this isn't, this isn't the end of the world. It maybe isn't the end of the world, but it is a huge catastrophic issue. The system is failing. We're witnessing it. We're experiencing it. Man, I had a whole thing written, but that stuff, ooh, acutely aware, couldn't tell us how many nurses they had lost, couldn't tell us about staffing retention questions, about exit interviews. Wouldn't that be the first thing you were doing if you knew you were having retention issues? We've got to figure out why people are leaving and do something about it. And then we've got to figure out if what we're doing about it is working. They couldn't tell you. They came here, and they couldn't tell you if what they were doing was working. That's scary. That's scary to me. To give you guys a little background on the issue, Providence Health and Services is a 51 hospital system. Providence Regional Medical Center in Everett is one of those 51 hospitals. Now, since I've been there, inadequate staffing has been a mainstay at Providence, and it's a massive community and public health issue. The thing is, it's not a new issue. Department of Labor and Statistics in 2008 reported, hey, between 2020 and 2030, you're going to need 270,000 additional nurses. So, the question isn't, what are they doing now about it? The question is, what have they been doing for the last 14 years? This needed to be fixed before we got here. It's proactive thinking versus reactive. Everything they told you is, we're reacting to this. Omicron happened, and then we hired people. What were you doing to have people ready for a potential pandemic? It's about preparedness. It's about patient safety, and these are the factors that we have to look at when we're trying to plan and be safe and be ready, and that's not happening. I think it was clear that's not happening. So, I think the questions you have to ask are, did Providence do anything effective to reduce turnover to that time? Did they do anything to implement, did they implement anything that worked to improve staffing? I think that we know that they weren't really prepared to answer what they had done that worked to improve staffing. The answer is no. What they did instead, what did they do instead? Well, they had a big money party. They had a big, giant money party. And how do I know? Well, I've been reading 909 IRS forms, IRS 909. You guys ever read those? Put down the Stephen King, pick up your IRS 909 forms. I mean, that stuff is riveting. It was really interesting. And what I found out is that CEO, I call him Rod Hockman, I just like the name better. It might be Hockman. I saw that his pay raise was from $4.1 million to $10.1 million between 2016 and 2017, 157% increase. We saw that in 2020, Providence received close to $2.7 billion in government bailout money, and they paid their top 10 executives just $36.5 million. That's 10 people, a 48% increase since 2016. Janine said that they were going to do this 6:1 ratio. Darren said they didn't want to work us so hard. I'm not sure which it is. It seems like they're kind of on different things. What they're doing to deal with the current crisis is they're doing this 6:1 patient ratio on certain med surg floors. They're trialing it. They said there's not a, it's called a Plan Do Study Act. To me, it sounds like an experiment. Thank you, guys, for your time. My name is Trevor Jendam. I hope we think about these things. I appreciate you guys for coming. Disappointing to hear that there wasn't some more data. There are plenty of nurses to hire. I think Kelly listed at 120,000 are available, 59,000 are working. That's plenty to hire. There's plenty of people out there. They're ready to go.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
You have to compensate.
Your time is up.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Trevor. Anthony, if you'd like to come up to the podium, please begin by giving your full name and city for the record, and you have a limit of three minutes, so at 2 minutes, 30 seconds, I'll ask you to wrap up.
Thank you. Mayor Franklin, council, thank you for having me. My name's Anthony Cantu. I reside at Lake Stephens, and I'm the union rep, USCW 3000, the union rep for many of the caregivers at Providence. You've heard from a lot of them over the last several weeks and their concerns, and I'm here to tell you that there's a lot of merit in those concerns. There's a lot of worry from all of our members, everything from staffing, safe patient outcomes. It goes on and on. I hear all this. I hear the stories, and it's hard, because I'm a patient here, too, right? My own selfish interests, I guess. I don't know. But what you're hearing today is, you know, you're hearing about bonuses, you're hearing about higher-end stuff. There's a lot more to it than that. We have proposed extra shift bonuses. Providence chose to discontinue those months ago despite our recommendations, despite us saying, hey, they work. They're getting caregivers in the door. Prov chose to discontinue those. We've recently re-proposed them to bring them back. We're trying everything we can. It was met with silence, at least as of yesterday. So, but some of the things I want to touch base on, you heard that nurses are leaving due to working conditions, but I'm arguing they're not leaving the industry, right? They're going to other hospitals. We know this because we talk to them. Speaking of exit interviews, fantastic idea. My understanding is they only happen when one of our members, one of these nurses says, hey, I'd like to give you my exit interview. They're not being solicited from, and Trevor's right. That's the first thing I would do if I was hemorrhaging, right? Find out where nurses are going and why. You know, we talked about, we talked about the ER and hallway beds, not necessarily adding more nurses. We heard it, we heard that they're closing other units and beds, but those patients have to go somewhere, so they're getting funneled to the ER where there's hallway beds, and, you know, it's troubling, right? You know, you can't have more patients without having more nurses, more caregivers. You know, there's, we talked to our charge nurses who are taking patient assignments now. Their job was to be the charge nurse and to direct the nurses with their patient assignment. Well, now, now they're taking full patient assignments almost like, not, almost every day. They're taking partial assignments every day. They can't do the charge nurse role because they're seeing patients. All of these things lead to potentially a negative patient outcome. You know, I guess my ask is, we would love to work with Providence. We would love to discuss staffing, safe staffing legislation versus it being opposed by the hospital associations.
I have to ask you to wrap up.
Thank you.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, President Stonyifer.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone who came tonight on this issue and public comments, and we are now going to move on to council comments and liaison reports, and I'll start back with Councilmember Ryan.
Great. Thanks, everybody, again, for being here tonight. I don't have much else to add. I am part of the working group. Councilwoman Fossey had made a motion a number of weeks ago to look more into this issue on what types of things council can do to help support our nurses, and so that's been a working group I've been very proud to be a part of and glad to continue working on it. So, the conversation will continue. Definitely, it's not going to be wrapped up tonight, so I look forward to continuing to work to find solutions. I would like to correct the record. I was not present at the July 20th council meeting, so I would need to be an abstain vote for that. And thank you to Deputy Chief for swearing in our new officers tonight. So, I had a chance to join the National Night Out events last night. I made it to three of the four that were on my itinerary and really enjoyed just being with the community. My children really loved all the extra ice cream that they got and face paint, so just really glad to be here in Everett. So, thank you.
Councilmember Vogli.
Thank you so much. This is, might be a record of speakers before council comments, so thank you, everybody, for being here and for speaking and for listening. I would like to bring up the book called Trauma Stewardship, and it is by Laura Van Dernut Lipinski. It is an everyday guide to caring for self while caring for others. It has been very helpful to me. It has a lot of your stories in it and ways that will be beneficial emotionally. I've been suffering myself with some PTSD, so I can hear you, and I have, I just have a glimmer of tear in my eye this time, but I have broken down here before. So, it's, it is a crisis, and we're dealing with all sorts of crises, and I talk about it all the time, and you're not weak for not being able to handle the trauma that you are experiencing every day. So, just remember that. You're not weak. You are strong people. And, yeah, it's the system because it's our whole capitalist society, right? And I was looking, you know, I haven't read a lot on Dan Price, but I'm sure something that could be done would be more of a fair pay, you know, equitable pay if the Rod Hockman is, you know, getting 157% increase and y'all, the nurses, are not. You know, you need to be able to have enough staff, and we're suffering at the city, too, you know? I mean, it's everywhere, and hospitals are caring for people. So, you know, we're filling potholes, and it's all important. It is all important. It is all important. But gosh darn it, you know, funnel some money into the people that are doing the work. It's hard to manage books. It is hard to turn the dials and make sure that there's enough staff. I understand. So there is that. Thank you for being here. Pay people. Also, I know that Providence as a whole understands burnout, at least I think so because they have an Instagram ad about it and where you can go to, you know, if you're suffering from burnout. So maybe look at Instagram, or don't, because that's horrible. And with that, I still am telling my kids not to get hurt because the ER cannot care for them right now, at least in a timely fashion. So that's what I will say, that I didn't manage to get out earlier, and I still thank you very much for being here, like all parties. And I did go to National Night Out, and we had an electric bus that was air-conditioned for the heat, and we had firefighters, and we had police officers, and everybody had ice cream, melting or not. It was good. That's community building, community being together. We have to do that more than once a year. And again, it's not something that we can legislate for you to get out and meet your neighbors and all of that. And I even had the pleasure of meeting some folks out and about at a musical event. So be well, everybody, and look into your mental health, and you are strong even when you are doing zero tasks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers Arlingo.
I'd like to thank Councilmember Vogel for her compassionate and encouraging words. We need that perspective. Also, thank Councilmembers Fossey and Ryan for your work to see what can be done here to work on the larger-scale issues, especially at the state. Perhaps we can join with the county in this. I think they have the same kinds of concerns we have. We can add their force behind this. I think they would be parallel with us in a lot of what they want. It is really encouraging to see us swearing in some additional police officers, neat people. I look forward someday to meeting Officer Niar and learning a little more about cricket. I have never, despite having seen it a few times on TV, never quite been able to understand it, but it's clear, it arises, it creates a lot of passion in areas with British history. So again, I hope to get a chance to spend a little more time with him and learn about And I hope to, I'm happy to see the efforts by Chief Templeman and the team, and look forward to working more with others, including Officer Abalas and the recruiting office, and see what we can do to do more. One other item, oh, and also with respect to National Night Out, I went to a couple of those yesterday evening. It was really a delight after a couple of years of not being able to do that, seeing everybody getting together, the kids running around in the parks, wonderful stuff. One of the most encouraging things I've experienced recently, last week, I attended a graduation ceremony for a group of students who had been through a class in data analytics, described as a kind of boot camp, 48 Mondays and Wednesdays held at Washington State University's Everett campus. If you don't know, data analytics is maybe briefly described as a set of tools that's really in demand today to take the vast amounts of data generated by our information systems and make sense of it in an actually productive way to improve processes, customer satisfaction, business efficiency, and effective communications between organizations. This class was created as a joint effort by WSU Everett, the Northwest Innovation Resource Center, and Workforce Snohomish. And interestingly, remarkably, these were not regular college students, but a really diverse set of mid-career skill seekers, career changers, people responding to job loss, and the general need really incumbent on us all to adapt and reinvent ourselves as the world shifts beneath us. Remarkably, the principal instructor, Dr. Nella Ludlow, had used her data analytics skills to make an estimate and a bet with Diane Kamalanka of the Northwest Innovation Resource Center. She, a driving force really behind the class, she made the bet they'd lose about 30% of the class over the first month or so. Dr. Ludlow was delighted to lose that bet as all of the students in the class did the required work, took the tests, demonstrated the skills to graduate. And then Paul Pittree, chancellor of WSU Everett, arranged graduation certificates for the students and a ceremony, and it was really, really heartening to see how this story unfolded, have the chance to meet the students and their families, not just parents in this case, of course, but spouses and children, given their life stages, to congratulate them, to share with them some encouraging words about how useful data analysis skills have been in my career of four decades or so at that. And I think those data analysis skills have been a consistent benefit for all those years, and I'm confident they will be for these students for the years to come. So, you know, in terms of these long-term bets we talk about in nursing and other professions, these are long-scale things. I'm just glad to see that stuff happening at the leading edge here to a group that you don't see as the typical stereotypical data analysis students. I'd really like to recognize and thank the folks from Workforce Snohomish, the Northwest Innovation Resource Center, and WSU Everett, an increasingly beneficial thing here in Everett, along with Everett Community College. I look forward to meeting the next class. They're going to do it again, starting this fall. That's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice President Tuohy.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to, again, thank everybody for coming and telling us more information. Really appreciate it and hope that we can help in some way as we get further along. I did enjoy National Night Out last night. Got to go to four different evening events, and it was great to see all the staff that was there. I think we saw parks and transit, police and fire, Public Works, and the library, and I may have missed another department, admin, of course, was there. Anyway, it was great to see everybody, really appreciate staff taking the time to meet with all of our neighbors. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Fossey.
Thanks. First, I wanted to give a big welcome to Alex and Vic. I think that it is really, we really strengthen and improve our public safety for the community when we hire folks with broad backgrounds and perspectives and, you know, that similar strong dedication to serving the community. So I just wanted to give them a big welcome. Glad they're on board. And this last weekend also was really fun in the community. My family really enjoyed it, everything from, you know, Nubian Jan, which was incredible turnout and a lot of fun, to Shakespeare in the Park with Everett Improv, and then Music in Marina was a hit, and my family really enjoyed that. So I don't have much other to speak about, other than to, again, thank everybody for showing up. I know a lot of our nurses and everything were asking for transparency and saying, you know, that they had all these concerns, so it means a lot to have you here and come and speak to that. So I just wanted to say how much we appreciate that, as well as our union neighbors being here as well to speak to it. So I appreciate you all being here, and thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwab.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to, just my last kind of thoughts tonight about our nurses and our administrative staff, and it's a huge problem, and I want to encourage both parties to sit down and work together. I know there can be very powerful things when you get a labor-management relationship in and working together and open up and be transparent with each other and try to do some resolutions there, because it certainly isn't going to be solved by one side or the other. And continue to encourage you to invite the community in to help support whatever solutions you guys can come up with together. So thank you again for both being here, and your speakers, and your passion, too. Thank you. I'd be concerned if you weren't passionate about what you guys do. That would mean, on both of you, so thank you for that. I, too, attended the National Night Out, two different events, one at the View Ridge-Madison Neighborhood and one at the Boulevard Bluffs, which aren't active, but evidently they came out for a party. And you know what? It's just wonderful. I got a lot of good, positive feedback of the city, and then also, of course, some several challenges that were brought up that we can talk about later there. Deputy Mayor Harper, but all good constructive feedback, but we definitely, the city and our neighbors are definitely experiencing challenges from the growth, whether it be the Boulevard Bluffs, which nobody hears about out in my neighborhood, you know, with the new, post new bridge and a new development on 36 West, and then some new developments. Of course, our neighborhoods in Madison and Evergreen, they're experiencing growth, so that's really the theme. There's just a lot of challenges, some good things, but also some challenges for our neighborhoods. Very grateful to the chief and your staff for showing up, and the police department. Really appreciate you guys playing frisbee with the kids. That went a long ways. Also, I got a lot of feedback here from the last week. The Volunteers of America did their first presentation on what I deem as really the Women and Children's Center on the Cemex site. I know we talked a little bit about the Palace Shelter, and really, that's just the type of construction that's built for the center. It's really not a homeless shelter. It really is for a Women and Children's Center, for them to, that choose to build their lives up and have some positive outcome and find, you know, eventually find the services that they need to advance in their lives. So it really is about, I hear the word "shelter." It really is a Women and Children's Center. So I'm renaming it officially today, unless the mayor tells me different. Also, for those of you who might be watching, just a little announcement, the Women and Children's Center of South Everett, they're scheduled August 11, another community meeting, so outreach. So I really encourage anybody that has any concerns to show up. It's going to be at North Shore Christian Church and Academy, and you can go onto the city website and find it. Also, just as a side note, the redistricting commission, which is new for us here in the city, because we have five districts and two at large, in the month of August, there is a series of meetings, and so they have proposed boundaries. So I'd encourage anyone that's interested to attend one of the meetings and determine the equity and the fairness of how the commission determines those boundaries. So thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to add my thanks to the city staff and the neighborhood leaders who organized for the National Night Out. What a wonderful night it was for it. And I wanted to remind anyone who's interested that the Northwest Neighborhood is having its annual garage sale this Saturday, and I think there's a rule against early birds, so don't break that rule. But I'm sure there are many, many homes with signs in the front yard, so I think it'll be a great event again. That's all for me. Do we have an administrative update this afternoon?
Nothing additionally. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hall, do you have anything for us from the city attorney's office?
No, no report from legal and no executive session. Thank you.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion for the six consent items. Councilmember Tuohy moves the consent items.
Councilmember Ryan, second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Ryan? Yes. Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tuohy?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. We have four proposed action items. Items nine and 10 are first reading, so I'll read those into the record. Item nine is Council Bill 2207-33, first reading. Adopt an ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled 2023 Federal Pavement Maintenance Overlay Fund 303, Program 127. The third and final reading will be on August 17. Item 10 is Council Bill 2207-34. It's also a first reading. Adopt an ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled WFP Portal 4 Improvements, Fund 336, Program 018, and repealing ordinance number 3864-22. The third and final reading will also be on August 17. Do we have any questions from the council on the four consent, uh, the four proposed action items? Councilmember Vogel.
I just wanted to re-ask, the only thing I remember asking before is about helmets, and so I'm wondering if there was any answers for item number seven, adopting an ordinance updating the park code, if y'all remember.
Yay, hi, Bob.
I see.
I mean, welcome.
Parks and Facilities Director Bob Leonard.
Bob Leonard, Parks and Facilities Director.
Mike.
No, it's Bob. Thank you. Bob Leonard, Parks and Facilities Director. We have not gotten an answer for that yet. We will get an answer before the action next week, so we will provide that to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions on the proposed action items? Seeing none, we'll move on to our action agenda. Item 11, Council Bill 2207-29, third reading. Adopt a proposed ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Everett Municipal Building Elevator Modernizations, Fund 342, Program 030, as established by ordinance number 3757-20. Do I hear a motion?
Motion so moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments on this before we take the roll? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Ryan? Yes. Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tuohy?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. Item 12, Council Bill 2207-30, third reading. Adopt an ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Police Headquarters Window Replacements, Fund 342, Program 031, as established by ordinance number 3758-20. Do I hear a motion?
Motion so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments on item number 12? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tuohy?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. And with no further business, no executive session, we are now adjourned.